Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to open up the village council meeting, a regular meeting, October 12th, 2021. I showed the time at 6:02. I see we have, looks like a full quorum, and with two participating remotely, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so before we move on, I'd like to, I need a motion to allow council members to participate remotely.
Send them, okay, send moves.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And then I also would like a motion to have Mayor Pro Tem, Kim Vanderburg preside over the meeting because she is there and can see a lot more than I can see. And welcome to the guests I think I see in the background there, so I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have adoption of the agenda. I haven't talked to any of you, so I don't know if there's any changes. Or Kim, do you want to take over from there?
Yeah, if that's okay. You good?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we need to add a closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A3 to consult with the attorney employed to retain by the public body in order to protect the attorney-client privilege. And we will do that in J. We just didn't have it on there. We need to remove under Village Hall, number one, discussion of the deus location and sizing that has been resolved.
It's been what?
Resolved.
Okay, good.
Good.
They're working on fixing it.
Good.
And then we also need to remove number, who, under F, unfinished business, number two. Consider approval of solid waste contract with us, active waste for services beginning April 1st, 2022, allowing manager to make minor modification pending attorney reviews and allow manager to execute agreement pending village attorney review. We are still having attorney reviewing.
Okay, so it's just going to be moved to another?
Yeah, we're just going to remove it for right now. And that, that is all I have. Anybody have any other changes, additions, subtractions?
I do not.
Jamie.
Open topics, we'll get to that when we get there, if we have anything, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything for you, Mr. Mayor?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right, then I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up is public comment period. I'm excited, have a full house. We usually just skip right over this because nobody's ever here. So we are going to start with the written submitted. So Austin, just so everyone knows, you get three minutes. I will put you on a timer. So if you're in the middle of the sentence, I'll let you finish the sentence, but then we'll have to wrap it up. So Austin, we'll start with, yes, can you hear me?
Remind, and then there's also no dialogue, which may lead into something. If they want dialogue Thursday, it'd be a great opportunity for that, but no dialogue, and that's an ordinance that we have with the village to keep things moving.
Yes, so this is just an opportunity for you guys to comment to us, but we are having a Fall Town Hall meeting on Thursday at 6:30 at the parks. Again, as the mayor said, that'd be a great time for some open dialogue. Austin, you want to start?
Okay, our first submitted comment is from Bob Nunencamp, 516 Wyndham Lane. Bob states, "I completely understand the concerns of residents regarding the placement of a 160-foot cell tower near their homes. In all likelihood, I would feel the same way. However, the Marvin area needs a cell tower due to extremely poor cell coverage. We are in the age of wireless communication, yet many of us in Marvin currently experience dropped calls, poor streaming, and less than acceptable connectivity in general. This situation is not acceptable to me and shouldn't be to anyone in Marvin. It needs to be corrected. My hope is that the council will take the concerns of all residents into consideration and work with the appropriate parties if possible to identify a viable solution that most neighbors can live with." Are you saying?
Yep.
Second is from Jill Dunton, 2030 Rocky Hollow Drive. "In 2019, my husband Steve and I built our forever home in the 55-plus Amber Meadows community. Our address is 2030 Rocky Hollow Drive, near the intersection of Ray and Tom Short Road, directly behind the Children's Life House daycare. We have lived in this area since 2000 and have definitely seen our community development into a highly desirable place to live. Our previous residence was in Hunter Oaks, pretty much across the streets from our current neighborhood. The proposed zoning amendment to allow a 160-foot AGL monopole communications tower, including an additional 10-feet lightning rod with the height equivalent to approximately a 16-story building, allowing for four carrier antennas, will be located behind our backyard and viewable from every rear window inside our home. The close distance is approximately .127 miles, 660 feet or 268 steps from our home, not to mention 50 feet from a daycare playground. This location will adversely affect many in the area. This proposed 170-foot tower location is not in harmony with the quaint residential walk-in community of the village of Marvin and unincorporated southwestern Union County. Thank you in advance for preserving our beautiful community." Jill also sent in a couple photos that I have here for council, and if you're, if you're not here, I'll get you this later. Any bounce on that? Get one.
Okay.
Um, that is all that's been submitted to me, written.
Okay.
Okay, so on to the speakers that are here. First up is, first up is Tanya McCallie. Actually, she's on the line, I believe. Tanya?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Following in the mayor's footsteps.
Hey, can you just make sure you state your address and your full name?
Sure.
Thank you.
Tanya McCallie, 2006 Meadow Vista Drive. I'm gonna, hi, Mr. Mayor Polino and council. I, as you know, am the president of the Tullamore Homeowners Association. Today, I not only represent all of the Tullamore homeowners, but I also represent Amber Meadows and Tullamore Task Force that has been recently formed, along with a large number of additional Marvin residents in opposition to the placement of the 170-foot cell tower as described in the application received by Union County, which you all have a copy of. We recognize the necessity of cell technology and its dependence on transmission towers. However, we are truly convinced that this specific location is extremely flawed and request any support our mayor and our council persons can provide toward getting this application denied. Our task force has put together an online petition directed to Marvin neighborhoods. It has only been online for five days, but already has over 320 signatures from constituents, from your constituents, which is a huge indication that the proposed location of this tower is flawed. 320-plus people have signed it. Public interest is significant and will continue to grow as word around our community spreads. A member of the task force who is in person there today will provide all of council the signatures and their addresses and where these people live, what neighborhood they're in, all 320 of them plus. Second, Ray Road is the de facto gateway to the village of Marvin. The need to improve the appearance of our neighborhoods and entryways such as Tom Short Road, et cetera, has all already been vocalized by many homeowners. A tower location in such proximity to Ray Road, just inside the Union County line, flies in the face of every image Marvin wishes to project. Unis also consider fit with the community character. The village of Marvin is predominantly residential suburban with increasing density. We have a few appropriate commercial centers. There are no structures over two stories this side of Lakeview or anywhere around Marvin itself. The tower is the height of a 16-story building and will protrude well above any tree line around here. It simply won't fit our community's character. Many homeowners moved to Marvin specifically so they would be protected from something like this being built right on top of their neighborhood. We greatly need your help. Thank you for your attention, and we hope you will help us fight against this cell tower being put just feet away from Marvin homeowners. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tanya.
Okay, next up is Dahlia Hartman.
Is everybody seated?
We're gonna need to stand. You can sit down.
That's okay, great. Okay, Dahlia Hartman, 1016 Jasper Lane. I wish to speak to you about the impact study that was provided to Union County in support of the tower. My comments are in the bottom of the findings listed in the report. First, we have to consider the appraised statement that he has completed the impact studies specifically to the needs of the client, city's which. Bert, Mr. Berkoich stated that he had inspected the surrounding neighborhood in details of land use based on his findings. He does not seem to know the facts. He states that the effective date of the report is February 2021. Had he actually seen the site when trees were there, he would realize the trees are not covered for the tower. So there is nothing significant to buffer the view of the tower from the homes and no possibilities of additional external influences who are buried in towers due. It should be noted there is no structures over two stories aside, aside this side of Lakeview and nowhere around Marvin itself. The tower is the height of 60-foot building as was stated and will protrude well, protrude well above the tree line. It simply won't fit our community character. The limited commercial use of Ray Road actually enhances the area by providing necessary services. He does not take account of the vision of a 170-foot tower with four levels of communication antennas attached. This is what we'll be seeing from our homes. Other towers in Union County are situated mainly in heavily commercial, industrial, and agricultural sites which have little and offset on residential property values. Marvin is mainly a quiet, peaceful village of upscale residential neighborhoods. He lists 24 towers in Union County, only three of which are semi-residential. People living in this, in this area still expect that their property volumes will be in the lower range. The appraised conclusion remarks are based on insufficient comparable facts. He does not seem to know or understand the aesthetics of our community and the added value of his location, a location that is in harmony with the vision of Marvin, where people are proud of the village, its plans for the future, and administration's support towards residents. The residents are the backbone of Marvin. We need your help to reject this unsafe and unsightly monstrosity. The project falls zone for the tower does not take into account the possibility of stone failure that could damage the daycare facility at its borders. Last week, Governor Cooper announced $805 million for daycare center support. Recent studies show that 20% of daycare centers could close within six months. Marvin needs to protect the daycare centers. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicely timed, thank you.
At first, I had a hard time hearing her, but then it cleared up a lot easier. But do we have that on in writing, by the way?
I will be happy to pass it along. I did make a copy, but I'll be happy to pass it along.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. It just was hard to hear you at first, but then it became clearer, so thank you.
We'll put it in Joe's box. Yeah. Next up is Gary Vale.
I will stand if you don't mind. I need to stress my back. Good evening, council and Mr. Mayor. My name's Gary Vale, and I live in Amber Meadows at 132 Jasper Lane, and I am chapter three of the cell tower story for you tonight. I'm going to start by tagging on to something Dahlia said about the daycare center. And I will tell you upfront, while these appeals we understand are minimally appeals, we think this location site has serious flaws on several levels that we think is going to affect the community as well as a lot of people that it shouldn't. And so that's why we're here. She talked about the daycare center and where it is. As you all know, most municipalities consider several criteria when they look at denying or approving these applications. One of those is almost unilateral, almost universally, the safety and well-being of their resident. Let me just, I'll give you a visual, and then I'll leave the tower for a moment. But imagine, you've got a tower that's 50 feet from the back play yard of a nursery that's full of kids five days a week. These towers don't often collapse, but they do collapse, and it's online, and you can tell. Visual example, most of our houses are about 50 feet, front door to back door, minus. Stand in the middle of that house, imagine a 50-foot circle, and look up at a 170-foot tower, and guess if that thing falls, if it's all going to fall within the four walls of your house. I doubt it. I'm going to find out if the commission believes that. I wouldn't be willing to bet on it, and sure as well, wouldn't bet the life of a child on it, if that's where it is, and that's what's going to happen, and that's what's done. We realize, they said that your problem to be blocked, it's not on your property, it's not within village parameters. That's why we're simply asking for a show of support. We would also say, as Tanya mentioned, the, we got incredible results to that petition. 325 people in that period of time is extraordinarily good. Plus, common sense says it affects your gateway, it affects the way that you look, it affects your village vision, and it affects a whole lot of your residents. I'll wind this thing up by saying, mentioned it's not, and we don't think it is. We think it's way more important than that, although we all have our views, whatever. But bottom line, we think we just have to consider what's best for village of Marvin as a community and for its residents. Allowing placement of 170-foot tower beside Ray Road at a gateway location just doesn't seem right to us. Citing that tower in a small retail center where it directly overhangs a brand-new 25-unit group of condos, if those people move in and just getting settled, and they was there for a reason, doesn't seem right to us. Citing that tower within full view of five or six upscale neighborhoods that have been here a while, also doesn't seem right to us. And finally, putting that tower literally on top of a privately-owned daycare by a female minority group entrepreneur who's been operating 10 years with our kids, doesn't seem right to us. We will kill that business. Perception is reality. When a parent drives into that parking lot and looks up, he's going to turn around and look for him on the daycare center, and she doesn't deserve that. Anyway, it's as simple as that for us. We appreciate any support the village can give it, and we appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Okay, Wayne, did you want to speak?
No.
Okay.
I'm just.
So that's everyone that signed up physically. You what? Did you sign in?
Yes.
Yes.
I signed in here.
Oh, oh, she did. I apologize. I never looked. So you're go, you're good?
Yes.
And what's your address?
Just your name and your address.
Driple Patel, 3005 Rocky Hollow Drive. Respect to mayors and council members, my name is Driple Patel, and I'm a licensed real estate agent in O'Keehan and South Town. I work with your property group of teams, Gina Lorenzo, and Compass, we work with Compass. Me and my, my team and I, 13 members, focused mainly in Union County and surrounding areas. I'm also the resident of Tullamore neighborhood, which will be impacted by installing the cell towers. Like me, many other residents of the Tullamore and surrounding neighborhoods are justifiably concerned about the proposed cell tower, reducing the values of the homes and properties. People don't want to live next to the one or just because, not just because of the health concern, but also due to the aesthetics and public safety reasons. Cell towers become a source of obstructing and tarnishing views and also can attract crime or potential noise nuisance filed in court. This negative effect can also contribute to a blight and deterioration of the neighborhoods and school districts. When the residents don't want to move, residents want to move out, pull their kids out of the schools where, you know, they have the towers located near them. This points underscore why wireless facilities are commercial patterned facilities and don't belong in the residential areas. They need to be placed in an alternative and less obstructive occupations. Putting cell towers near residential property is just a bad business. For listed residential owners, it means decrease values, and the people like me, we sell the homes less price, and it's a less income for every union, the less revenue per city. The survey conducted by National Institute of Science, Law, and Public Policy among thousands responded concluded polls. 94% said nearby, said a nearby cell tower or group of antennas would not interest in the property, and they would not buy. But 95% said they would opt out to buy authentic property that had zero antennas on the public, on the, on a compatible property. 79% said under no circumstances they would ever purchase a rental property within a few blocks of the cell tower. 89% said they were generally concerned about the increasing number of cell towers and antennas in their residential neighborhood. There was some more study conducted from the appraisal journal and added that even buyers who believe that there are no adverse effects of the cell tower, cell phone tower, base stations, knowing that other potential clients might clean rivers, everything that, you know, it may affect their health, they'll probably seek the price discounts on the property located near the center. Being in real estate for over a decade, I've never sold a home that has a cell tower or electric tower located nearby, which would impact the desirability of the home when my clients are trying to sell the home, or, you know, it would affect their views or enjoyment of health while they live in the home. So my team and I, and along with the residents of all the neighborhoods in Tullamore, I strongly urge to the council and city officials not to allow installation of the cell tower near the community and the daycare and place it in an alternative location where it will not affect the desirability of these expensive homes and the people in the lives of residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no one else physically moves to online?
Do we have anybody online who would like to speak? If you would, just go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and your address. Nobody online?
You can come sign the sheet.
This is Bob Vogel at 1031 Jasper Lane. Can you hear me?
Yes.
What's on, Bob?
Oh, great.
You said 1031?
Jasper Lane.
All right, we are on the clock.
Just want to make it short and sweet. I, I've been working with the senior planner for the county, and in essence, what he's telling me is because their, their zoning ordinance is kind of like old, antiquated, that they, even though they realize that the zoning order should show a fall zone for a cell tower, that's minimally the equivalent of the height of the cell tower plus a percentage going all the way up to twice the length of the cell tower. But, but their zoning only goes by the engineered fall zone that's created by the manufacturer of the tower, which lets them build it 50 feet from another property. So i- in essence, I agree that we're not against cell towers. We need them. We understand that. We don't need 160, 170-foot cell tower in that location. And, and what we're trying to appeal to, to the, the county is to say, just pick a different, less intrusive site. That's all we're saying. This site is not right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
You're welcome.
Next up is Kristy Brown.
Okay, I don't have anything formally prepared, but I just wanted to add a few things that I think are important to consider.
What's your address?
You can state it.
Scott Water Court. But number one, we're looking at the possible rezoning. So in red, once the rezoning takes place, we don't know for sure if it's just going to be one tower or all of a sudden there are going to be multiple towers, kind of opens the floodway gate. And then everyone says so nicely, it's, you know, they understand this isn't directly your problem. We know it's not your property. But, you know, I just think, when you think of the town of Waxahaw, everybody thinks of a water tower. Well, guess what? You're driving down Ray Road, and you see this monstrosity. I mean, this, I don't think people are understanding the magnitude, the size of this tower. And it's like, oh, there's Marvin. Take a right up Marvin School Road, the next road, like this is going to have a direct correlation with the village of Marvin, whether it's on Marvin property or not. And the fact that it's right over the Muthamur County line, just makes you wonder, like, this is supposed to be for our benefit, but why is it there? Like, covering them too, right? So these are just all questions I have. Just wanted to share those concerns, too. I think the village of Marvin should have an interest. This is something that's going to affect us going forward. If we're trying, I've read the website and all the, the goals and visions, and those are so exciting, that we're not standing for something like this that's affecting the whole village right now is going to alter all of that, too, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy.
Thank you.
Well done. May I have a minute?
Oh, yes, yes. If you can just state your name and your address.
Of course. Carlos, I'll be addressed 3011 Rocky Hollow Drive.
Say that again?
3011?
Rocky Hollow Drive. Um, I am, I'm really concerned, and I, I'm in solidarity here with our senior neighbors here at Amber Meadows who bought their forever house here. The plan for the tower is going to really put it practically in their backyard. If you see the view that they have along their, their pond, they see the skyline and trees, but they will see now it's a gigantic tower. And this is our senior citizens, which I think deserve most respect. Doesn't affect me that much, but I do know that we might be able to see it also from, from my house. I remember house hunting, and how that was a factor for us. We saw a couple of houses that were near towers of electricity or of antennas. It looks awful. We decided not to go for houses that were near those because they just don't look good. And now, having made a decision of buying an expensive house here, now having this development, it's really a bummer. It's also, it's, and I'm not exaggerating, is, is wanting me to want to move. It's, it's making me. So I think it's a serious thing, and I hope you guys can help us fight this. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Carlos.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else online that would like to speak?
Yes, good evening. This is Sean Soul. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good evening, council and Mayor Polino. My name is Sean Soul, and I live at 2002 Meadow Vista Drive in Tullamore. This proposed tower location would be approximately 1,000 feet from my property. I've been living in Tullamore for, it's about seven years now. And kind of to echo what Carlos had just stated, is that, you know, the, the whole plan for Tullamore and the, the walking trails and just the whole feel of nature and everything around there was really what attracted us to Marvin. We have beautiful homes, you know, wonderful community. And I think putting this kind of a tower, where they're talking about putting it, really flies in the face of what, you know, what has attracted us to Marvin. And I think putting this kind of a tower, um, where they're talking about putting it, uh, really flies in the face of what, you know, what has attracted us to Marvin. Um, my primary concern really is, um, what effect that's going to have on properties. Um, in, in hearing the, uh, presentation from, uh, the cell tower company, uh, its attorney, uh, you know, stating that there would be no effect on, uh, you know, property values. I, I really completely disagree with that. Um, I don't think anybody wants to have, um, any large utility right in their backyard. Um, I think the location that's being chosen for this, um. It really affects all of us in right in that direct area. Um, so really just would appreciate your support and, and helping us, you know, fight this and, uh, help to protect our property values.
All right, thank, thank you. Anyone else online?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, this is Karen Ahmad and I'm from three thousand Rocky Hollow Drive in Tulamore.
Can you, hey Karen, can you pronounce, can you spell your last name for the record?
Yes, A H M A D.
A H.
N A D.
M E D.
N E D, sorry.
And I like to echo the same thing that my fellow neighbors said that this tower is going to be a few hundred feet from my house. And as much as I would like to receive, uh, you know, the best cell phone reception, um, the whole reason we bought a house here is. When my husband was, uh, looking for a job here as a physician, as a neurologist, he accepted a position at atrium Valentine. And we were looking for a house in, in, in upscale community and we landed up here. So this would really, um. Um, be a setback since we moved here one and a half year ago. And, um, hopefully because of this, we won't have to move out of, uh, Marvin and, um, um, move our work, uh, from atrium Valentine to as a neurologist. So please consider this request, you know, and, um, just requesting a different location for this tower. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else online?
Yes, hold on.
Hello?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, Michael Koss. Last name is spelled K O S S. I live at, uh, one zero zero six Meadow Vista Drive in Tulamore. I completely agree with, uh, the sentiments that my neighbors have, uh, provided during this call. One aspect that, uh, has not been emphasized, the cell phone tower, uh, consistent with other cell phone towers will have a generator as well as a fuel tank. Uh, what, um, was not emphasized or spoke about during our time with the, um, applicant's attorney. Was the proximity of this fuel tank, uh, to the McBride branch, which, uh, goes into Six Mile Creek. So while we speak of risks of, uh, tower falling and things like that, I think probably a more, uh, likely risk is that of a fuel tank leaking. Uh, and, um, creating a problem for really the rest of the, uh, the Marvin community downstream. So those that are in Firethorn and, and, um, uh, adjacent, uh, communities. Should be concerned of this as well. Uh, this proposed tower is a hundred feet from a stream and a fuel storage facility a hundred feet from a stream. That just doesn't seem reasonable to me. Really appreciate your, your support and, uh, attention that you've given during this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Anyone else online?
Also, Ken. Yeah, I'd like to comment about what the gentleman was talking. Wayne Deffert's twenty-sixty Rocky Hollow Drive, uh, the gentleman brought up the wetlands. Uh, in my last conversation with our report engineers, no one had a pro statement asked any questions about it. So he has a, when I talked to him, he said he was going to be in touch with each one to ask. So, but, uh, have not heard from him about anything, the field, um, the process. It's going to be right on the edge of the, uh, flood zone. So. Stuff has been addressed.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else online?
Yes, um, hi.
All right. Hi. Hi, um, this is. Can you state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Sula Ba Gupta and I live at nine six two Meadow Vista Drive in the Tulamore neighborhood. Um, and so, yeah, I've been there from, from, you know, when it was first starting and, and I see where, you know, it was, it was very open space. The area was beautiful with the meadows and then we, we did see, you know, construction with, you know, the neighborhood that's adjoining to us and everything. And so I mean, I've, I've seen that we've, as a neighborhood, have seen change, um, happen around us. And not all change is bad, but I do feel like this particular issue with the cell tower is not a good change. That's not something that's going to help us from the, from a health perspective, as well as from aesthetic perspective and financial perspective. So in all, I'm kind of mirroring, I think, what everyone else has kind of been mentioning, but I just wanted to voice that I agree strongly with. All the arguments that have been, um, presented so far and I appreciate your time. I appreciate you listening to us.
All right, thank you so much. And can you state your, your name again? It was kind of muffled. Sorry.
Oh, sorry, yes. Uh, it's Sula Ba Gupta.
Can you spell that?
Sure, yeah, sure, no problem. Yeah, first name is S U L A B H A and the last name is Gupta, G U P T A.
And what was your address?
Nine six two Meadow Vista Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else online? Welcome to Game Show Post. Okay, speak now or forever hold your peace.
She's like a radio talk show. You're getting locked. That's good.
All right. Thank, thanks everyone for all of your comments. Um, we've, I know Hunter's over here making a bunch of notes. So am I. We're all listening to what you guys are saying. So we appreciate all of your comments and taking the time to come out and, and, and be online and be here in person. So thank you all very much. Um, all right, next up is reports and updates.
Can I, can I just ask one thing? It was something that was mentioned.
Not yet.
Okay.
Hold, hold that, hold that hot. We're going to get to it just a minute and then you can ask a question.
Thank you.
Kristina, I don't have anything for, all right. All right, so here we go. Hunter, you're up.
Okay, um, as, uh, I'm sure all council is now fully aware of the, uh, application that was received by Union County in regards to, or in the proposal of the hundred sixty foot mono. Whatever, monopole cell tower. Um, just, uh, I provided you guys, I mean, I've talked to some of you guys about, you know, what I've gathered from the county. Was able to get the application from them and all the additional materials, about a hundred and fifty-seven pages long. Have started going through that, tried getting as much information, um, for, for the council, you know, just to provide, provide that. Uh, but ultimately, um, you know, I want to reiterate, this is a county proposal. We do not have any direct planning jurisdiction or any, any of that, but we plan, try to, you know, hear the residents' concerns and, uh, voice that to the county and inform a resolution. Um. I want to also address, I think, there was a tension brawl, but there was a three hundred foot tower approved last year, about a mile and a half down the road. Confirmed with the county, this one was a, uh, emergency services tower for emergency communication only. And has no, uh, technology for any type of co-location for telecommunication. Once again, I'm not an expert on it. So I have no idea fully what that means, but, uh, I do, did want to at least bring that to your guys' attention because I, I feel like some of you guys have maybe heard, heard that from some of the residents. But, uh, the, the two towers are, are two different things and are not compatible with one another. Um. If you haven't had a chance, if any of the, like, uh, council members have not had a chance to review the, uh, memo press release that was sent out last Thursday. Provided a copy for, uh, copy for you, uh, just providing some background information on that and, uh, you know, the current status. I also did provide just the application itself, just the, the two-page application, not the additional materials. Um, from the county that was received, uh, officially, I guess, like, um, August sixteenth. And, um, that application itself does have kind of a general outline of the county's conditional zoning, uh, process. Which, what, last week was the community meeting that was required for their application. And currently the county is waiting on any revisions from the applicant before it is heard by planning board. Uh, the senior planner did inform me today that he is still, uh, expected to be in, like, uh, the county's planning board for November second. And they will make a recommendation and there'll be a plan, uh, public hearing heard by the county board commissioners at the December meeting, which. That they, sorry, is potentially for December sixth. I would encourage, uh, all residents listening and that are here tonight, you know. Definitely go voice your concerns to the county planning board and commissioners. Everything that you said here tonight is all valid. And, um, will definitely be taken in consideration for the council to make their, uh, resolution. Um, you know, either against or, or for, and, um. With that being said, it's the, the intent is as we keep gathering this information that, you know, I'm trying to get it to the council members, uh, for you guys. Then, you know, once you can make that decision in, in the next couple of weeks.
When is the November planning board meeting? Could they, could they can go speak at that one as well?
Correct.
To, so that.
Uh, to, the planning board meeting for the county is scheduled for November second.
Okay.
And. Yeah. And the, from what the, from what the county told me, the only thing that basically, the only reason it would not be, you know. Be that date is if they, if the applicant makes revisions to their application or, you know, gets additional information, that would kind of push that all back a month.
So you can keep.
Yes.
The community updated on that, but they do need to register to speak.
Correct.
Forehand.
Correct. In the memo, the thing from the county is that, especially during those meetings, and I'd be happy to, you know, put that link out. Um, the county requests, is there, I guess, virtual and all this stuff to, uh, if you would like to speak, um, click that link, put in your information. And, um, your comments will definitely be heard. The other thing I would like, uh, would mention, would like to mention is that when there is a, when, when the public hearing. Is officially set for the county commissioners to vote on it. And it's tend to be right now is at December sixth, uh, Union County Board of Commissioners meeting.
That's not what they're voting on.
They're not voting from, no, from what I was told is that, that's not when they vote, but that, that is the time for all Union County residents to come voice, you know, their, their, you know, for, and their, their comments and concerns. All adjoining property owners, so this mainly directs for Amber Meadows, shall get notified of that public hearing date. Any other residents that are interested to make sure they're notified can submit and bring in, just submit requests to the county, uh, senior planner. For the planning department that you guys would like to be notified of the public hearing date and time. The, the village will also try, will notify because that's a, uh, we will be notified on that. We'll just make sure that all residents are informed on that, those meeting dates. Um, but right now, like I said, the timeline's tentative and it all depends on when the council, when the applicant and city switch gets their information back to the county.
So really the first thing to do is go to the planning board meeting.
Correct.
And voice any opinion, whatever the opinion may be, to the planning board, because then the planning board is going to then take that information and either say that, that they're, they recommend it or they're not.
Correct. And just to clarify on the process, it, the planning board has, uh, the county planning board has about the same role as we did, as the village of Marvin does. As in their recommendation board, they make a recommendation to the county commissioners and that even though if the county planning board recommends for the county commissioners to not approve it. Um, the county commissioners are the one that ultimately vote on the decision. Uh, with, with some of the new language with the state, once the one sixty D statutes. And this is for any, any type of planning application, anytime an application is submitted, it has to be officially voted on by the elected body. There's no way for that, uh, even if the planning board tries to deny it or not recommend it or any of that, it still has to be heard by the, um, elected body. So that's why it's going to eventually be heard. The only way that doesn't happen is if the applicant, or the applicant pulls his application. Um, and, you know, I'm not, I don't have any knowledge on if that's anything here after the community meeting. Um, the, the county told me today that they reached out to them to, to, you know, get an update from them on their application status, but I've not heard anything from them yet.
Yes, briefly, uh, you were given an opportunity to speak, which is great. They, they did this. A lot of local governments will allocate town. And by the statutes, they are authorized to set limits and rules and a lot of them will say, we're going to give the opposition a collective voice of X number of minutes and have representative, representative speakers. So something y'all might want to think about before you go. Hopefully you'll all get to speak. Uh, but if they have several public hearings, they may have that in place. And it's just always good to think about that if you want to have representation and kind of that coordinate so you aren't scrambling right there on the spot.
Thank you for that. And I've been told that Jordan Hanson is the senior planner on the planning board. I got much the same speech. And they have much the same three-minute limit. The difference is, like the US Senate, they will let you seed time or make a deal with you if you can convince them that you're.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good then.
I don't know about permissions. They may need much time.
All right.
The, the last thing I'll mention is, and this goes for, you know, anybody, is I do, uh, the county did send me the under fifty-seven page application packet. That has all that information of your guys' concerns. Once again, it's, it was provided by the applicant and I know, you know, that's, that can go one way or the other because it's trying to, you know. Show their side of the argument. Um, if you're interested in that, I'd be, you know, either reach out to the county or I'd be happy to potentially share it with you.
We can.
Okay, I was about to say, it, it's taken me some time to go through it, but, um, but that has all that information and concerns of. Potentially, I guess, addressing this concern of the environmental health and all that stuff. Now, once again, that's, that's the data that's provided from the applicant, not an outside party.
So.
Joe, go ahead.
Um, I just want to chime in on a couple of things. Um, so to be clear, because I did hear some chatter about two companies and one not knowing what the other's doing, but there are two separate issues. Is that right? There is not a second company that's looking at bringing in towers at this time?
Uh, I, I'm not sure what you're referring to, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I, I've, I've been hearing chatter of two different, or some have said that there are two different companies looking at putting in cell towers. And you mentioned something about one is not related to a cell phone tower will be located somewhere else, but just to confirm that.
Yes, so, yes, so there's.
There was something wrong with the audio. I'm trying to fix it. That's why we can't hear it.
Oh, is it me?
Oh, no, okay.
That's tiny volume.
We're good. Okay.
Okay.
No, 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 it wasn't you. We heard you. It was just very low. Um, so there's one that's the giant tower that they are looking at putting behind. And between Amber Meadows and the daycare. Then I think the other issue are the five G towers. That if the giant one doesn't get approved, then there is a possibility that they're looking to put in five G towers in Tulamore.
So.
Different company, but.
Yes, so once, this is city switch who is an acting representative, the, the hundred sixty-foot pole city switch, acting representative for AT&amp;T. There was, um, not any type of formal application, just I guess, general information, which I still don't even know how this was some, I guess, where they identified these locations. But Verizon reached out to, to me about five G nodes and the locations were in Tulamore. Currently, um, they have not submitted any form of application, don't plan on it. From my understanding, they were, what, they were going to potentially co-locate off this AT&amp;T facility if it is approved. Uh, once again, I'm not an expert and do not have all the information on how that techno, the technologies work. Because, uh, when somebody told me that it's two different things and Verizon now says they're waiting, so I have, I have no idea. Um, one thing that I'm currently working on is actually small cell node zoning language for us to have in there. The only kind of, um, only language that the village currently has in their zoning ordinance in regards to telecommunications towers are like the one hundred sixty-foot one that's being, um, uh, that was applied for through the county. Uh, with the technology changing, uh, the states kind of changed their language and added small cell and, um, small cell specific language. Is that something we're going to do to update our, our zoning language? So we can't have some authority there because currently it's, it's kind of a gray area if it's considered that. Or then, you know, where do we have that authority to, to regulate? Um, but. When I was talking with Verizon, I was able to, from my understanding, at least get them to not even think about locating in any type of residential neighborhood because it makes no sense to me. Because one of the things that they promote and do is locating off of existing, uh, utility structure, uh, example of the, um, power lines. And all it is, then, if they attach anywhere from, I think, from a six to ten foot type of device on top of those power lines and it does the same thing instead of installing. Anywhere from, I think, from a six to ten foot type of device on top of those power lines and it does the same thing instead of installing a pole. So um we have power lines that run through here and that's kind of, you know, every I I conveyed all that to Verizon and they were once again, one waiting, I guess, on this, the the county application as well as regathering. Um, information on locations for their five G nodes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Well, yeah, thank you for that. And and so just to be clear, the five G are the ones that um you see going up in the Blakeney area. Is that correct?
Correct. If you're driving down right in the Blakeney area. You you might notice.
Telephone pole, but definitely a different looking structure that, okay.
I think they max out about forty five feet.
They call them small wireless. That was a lot of federal lobbying. They're actually about the size of a refrigerator. Tumulted, but they put them up in the air, but there's a lot of strong. Federal and state law to allow them.
Okay. The um.
Lot more protections than the towers.
Okay. The the other thing, I I think we mentioned, I may speak for the rest of the council that I don't think any of us are experts on. Um, this this subject, so we're learning as we go, quite frankly, but. That said. Who um may or is there a way we can find out? For the residents, because it's 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 not necessarily. A good thing just to go in and complain and say not in my neighborhood, but to give alternatives. And what I mean by that is who should we be talking about to um? For alternative sites or what are alternative sites may be acceptable? In and around our area if they need to focus. I mean, one lady mentioned about it being so close to um Mecklenburg County and stuff, so. So I guess i- is there someone hundred that you know, or is there some way we can find out? Through the company we're dealing with is, okay, um. What are they? What are they? What are they looking for as far as what is ideal for an acceptable site? And then uh is there someone we can maybe tap into to help us? It for those who don't want that in our neighborhood and uh, you know, to to help us with uh an alternative answer for them, if that makes sense.
So. The simple answer is like. I know I don't have any type of direct contact to kind of gather, you know, useful information. Um. So a lot of this information, at least in regards to a hundred sixty foot pole, was in their application itself. It stayed it stated in that application, the way they they. Identify this location was a mixture of the zoning regulations, the uh. The 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 quote unquote drop zones on where the lack of service is at, as well as this around the um house household numbers, which. I think that's funny because it's actually impacting from a from a view shed and all the environmental pack, but it's also they're looking at it as how many how many households may um service within a certain certain amount of area. Because the technology is all dependent of like how tall the the tower is, is how well it broadcasts to an extent or how far it broadcasts. So um. You know, with that being said, that's how I guess they identified this ray road because it's. It was um. It was a conditional zoning, it's. That development was a conditional zoning amendment or conditional zoning district already. And so they're applying for an amendment to that conditional zoning district to allow the use of that hundred uh to allow a hundred and sixty foot monopole um. Development there. Uh, when they, you know, other locations, I'm not sure. Once again, that's that's not necessarily. Uh, I know it was mentioned about, you know, requesting the county to look at other other locations. You know, that's on that making that. Just from us, from me being a municipal and planning staff, like. You can help applicants with that, but for the most part, that's that's only applicant itself, but they're building and stuff on how they select locations. Um, and so, you know, that's something that we can definitely ask the county if that's uh. You know, a a way for them to work with the applicant, I will mention that. They they told me that they asked the. Ask the applicant if there's any potential to move the 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 tower itself on the property and apparently they said no, don't know why, but that's that's all the information I have on. So.
They do. Who owns the land?
Uh. Yeah, it's a development development company.
So are they going to buy the land?
They're leasing and they and one of the. For them to apply for this, they had to get a authorized agent agreement with the actual property owner to. Apply for this application um on their behalf. That that's the only that that's the reason they're able to apply for it, the conditional zoning amendment and not actually be the property owner itself.
Okay. What's it currently zoned as?
It's, I think the underlying zoning is. Can be too.
Which is.
It does not allow, it does not allow telecommunications.
Correct. It does not allow telecommunications, but the overall developed the. The way it works, you have your underlying and they applied for a conditional zoning to allow it, uh which is planning and development. And um when those get approved, it's kind of like Tate Morgan Gardens for for just an example. When that's approved, you have a specific setup permitted uses and and design standards and all of that, and that's what was done in this case for that development. So the applicant is applying to amend. That conditional zoning language to allow for that mono um for the development of those.
It's not allowed now, but they're trying to get it.
Correct. And it wa- and it wouldn't even be allowed in the underlying based on a B two.
And who and who approves that? Is that the county?
The county.
So that's what they're doing. They're going for a rezoning request. And then.
Yes, and you know, it. So it's not a rezoning request, it's just an amendment to the.
Conditional.
Additional.
Which.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Board of adjustments.
No, it it's.
No, because each condition is part of the zoning.
Yeah.
All your conditions are part of your underlying zoning, so they're trying to get their zoning amended to a lot of that.
Correct. If it was just, if it was just a special use permit, meaning it, then that's where it would go to the board of adjustments.
So but then do they have to like, or can they? Do it at the same time, like approve the rezoning and approve it or they're just.
There's no rezoning. It's just, it's just an amendment. As Chad was mentioning, so when they that rezoning or the pod was approved in twenty seventeen, I believe, and it had the specific conditions and permitted uses and so on. So they they're applying to amend the original re- the original rezoning request to allow. That. So it's not a formal rezoning. It's an actual, it's a actually, it's a text amendment to an extent.
I got you.
Essentially the same process.
Yeah.
Okay, but it's but it's the county commissioner from board of adjustments. Okay.
TNT ritz man on that three hundred.
Ma'am, I'm so sorry. You can't ask questions right now. So sorry. Um, okay, so. If we can, we can hire, can we go hire somebody to help look at additional? Sites and help like try to figure out additional. We can like co-location.
We can look into it and work with the county. I mean.
Okay.
Um. I'm not, like I said, I'm not sure. That this started back in February slash April, they had their. The applicant had it their pre-development meeting with the county on August twelve. In regard saying, hey, we're looking to. Submit an application for the zoning map amendment to allow this or, you know, to to allow this and. So on, so on. I don't know how much the county basically said, like, once again, once an application is being submitted that you can't a- a- as a staff member, you can't, you can't deny them formally applying.
Sure.
Um, but I do not know on what worth the county did to potentially advise them on. You know, hey, this might not work here because of the surrounding communities. There are some other surrounding properties that might be a better fit.
All right. Can we talk to, can we look into that?
Yeah, we'll look into that and we'll, y'all have a work session. We've got, I don't want to say we've got plenty of time, but we do have time before the public hearing.
Yeah.
So we'll look into a technology consultant and.
But then co-location. And talking to the county to see like.
Uh, yeah, I'm talking to the county pretty much every day now.
Right. Have we asked them that question? Like, did they talk to them about other locations or?
No.
Okay.
All right, we'll report back on the twenty eighth.
And has anyone talked to the la- uh person who owns the daycare?
We have not.
We haven't directly. But I don't know if the county has or if the applicant has, because I if I was not on the community meeting, it's for national out. Um. But from my understanding, that was brought up during the community meeting. Uh, because one, the two things as, you know, people here from during public comment mentioned. I don't think the daycare was taken into consideration for their fall zone analysis as well as even the property uh property value. Impact analysis. And so that was the the county cannot make them. Do that, but that is, that's that's one thing that the applicant can do and then.
Okay.
That would push these dates of the potential hearings back.
Okay. So you'll you'll keep on the dates, see if like what's going on, if they've changed at all and kind of just keep keep us. Up to date on it and then also obviously the community up to date on it. Jimmy, you had a question earlier.
Well, I think some of it's been covered, but I was gonna look at going back to, you know, this is kind of the. Everything's kind of moving forward in the process. Where where are we at in the process? So where we can kind of interject and go, wait a second. You are impacting our community. You are, you know, are you looking at alternate sites? Because. I would just like to know what the process is. Someone just. Says, okay, we're just gonna move in your backyard. People are gonna fill out a thing. This is the county, yeah, county, county, that nobody on the planning system. I don't live there, so it doesn't matter. So where, you know, where in the process can we jump in and go, okay, stop? Can it be from the zoning standpoint? Can it be from? A, you know, just what we were talking about with the daycare. Where can we kind of throw the brakes on it and go? Without without getting into the public, because sometimes I I think it is phenomenal to be able to do the public comment. And I think it's well. Well done. But sometimes something is so far along that that they'll just sit there and, you know, just count the butterflies and then and then say what they say and that's.
I I'll kind of summarize and say to the extent that Marvin is involved, again, this is not Marvin property. The only thing that we can do at this point is. You know, push the county as to what the resident concerns are, do an opposition resolution as y'all done in the past. We uh, if you recall. The Edmonton apartments that were going to affect Weddington Chase, same situation happened that we're seeing now. Y'all did a resolution of opposition. You also got your um Western Municipal Alliance folks to follow some of that, so you really rallied support with. Other local jurisdictions to oppose such development. We could do something similar to that. Y'all have plenty of time. Uh, we just have to get that approved before the public hearing is is done, which is in November.
Okay.
So you'll have a couple of meetings in December. So you'll have a couple of meetings before then y'all can get that done.
That's a good point. Have you guys talked about this a little yet?
No, we haven't had an opportunity yet to, because we didn't get. Information and we.
Okay.
Messed up our date last.
So what what we'll do from a staff level is we'll assess continually and we'll report back to the council on the twenty eighth. Y'all can direct us at that point in time what you want to do as far as an opposition opposition resolution. Hiring a technology consultant, you know, we'll we'll present all the options by that point.
So so by that. So our next meeting for Bluma, I think, is the the third Thursday of every month. And we have like maybe a draft resolution. By that, I the only reason I'm saying is because we're going to go to them and say, okay, you know, and this has worked before. Where we have Weddington, we have Wesley Chapel, basically all speaking on behalf of. Marvin and we all kind of work in sync together when we we know high density, whatever the issue is that every other municipality has that's similar to ours. We tend to, you know, have each other's backs on that, so um. I, you know, I I definitely will, I made a note to put it on Wuma and I'll send that to. The person who runs that meeting, but um I don't know if we're, you're you're saying Christina will possibly look at a draft resolution?
And and Mr. Mayor, I just checked the meeting for woman is the twenty eighth. That's the fourth Thursday of the third.
Okay, there were five.
That's the same day it's our council meeting, so I'm not sure what time y'all.
Yeah, it's in the afternoon, but we have a work session in the morning, so Andy and I usually go from there and right into.
Normally falls on the same date, but sometimes it doesn't.
It is this month, so we'll we'll be able to, we'll be able to at least give a good update at that point, like kind of where we are.
Eventually, they'll face the same issues as time goes on and, you know, I mean, it's it's good to have your municipal and then they they recognize because. We're a big voting block in Marvin. They're a big voting block in. In Waxaw, I mean, Weddington, all those different areas that surround us and and that's who county commissioners answer to at the end, so.
All right, Bob, did you have something?
No, I was just gonna say that to your point about different locations. I'm just curious, what makes this such a hot area? Yeah, for, you know, from the standpoint of five G towers in the Tullmore area to this thing. What is it that location wise, this is so hot? I'm just kind of curious.
What what I'll do for you guys.
But I'm, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, what I'll do for you guys is, like I said, uh, I just got this application last Thursday, been slowly going through it, trying to gather, you know, the information uh provided from the county. I will send out information as in just what the applicant stated, why they are located here and all that. So that will at least give you some direction. Once again, it's all provided by the applicant.
Yeah.
Um, why I was selected, you know, just just to simplify when it this, this is typical in any type of large. Um, organization, if it's, you know, eighteen for market development, whatever, they. They pulled data of household numbers all of a sudden and zoning and stuff and identify certain locations on where they could potentially put something like it, the same thing if it was like a target. Gasing whatever. They're looking at household numbers, zone uh the zoning of that property. If it, you know, complies with the, if it allows it for whatever that, I guess, with jurisdiction zoning or the states and all of that, so. I'll put that together for you guys, provide that information either, you know, sooner and then we, you know, can be a discussion point for the work session meeting.
All right. Thank you. Jimmy.
Thank you.
Bob, Joe, you guys got anything? Any other questions? Okay. All right, Hunter, anything else from the platter's report?
Oh.
No, okay. All right, Christina, write a report.
I have another.
All right. Uh, Deputy Galus.
He's unable to attend to the reports there. Y'all have any questions, we'll be more than glad to.
Yeah, that'll be good. You guys have any questions that we can send to?
I don't know if I just, we got so many residents on. This is a good thing. I would, I just want to comment that uh. Um, I am seeing a lot more uh visual. Where they're making rounds in the community, so um that's your, for those listening in, those are your tax dollars, that one cent. Uh, difference. I don't know if they've noticed, but they they've told me that they hit every neighborhood, they drive through that neighborhood. Uh, so that presence has always felt uh. Uh, I don't know where you feel on some of the things that are happening nationally, but I think this council has. Certainly uh got behind our uh law enforcement. Uh, we had national night out a week ago. But I will say that uh I am seeing them a lot more in. In in neighborhoods, which is a good thing, so thank you for that, by the way.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, planning board chair report, Mr. Jones. Nope. He's not here. All right. Bobby, got anything?
No, it was uh basically dealing with signage um and uh, you know, over at the uh where the public sits as well as uh. You know, it's going to be uh. Preparation for new construction and lease leased places out in front of the area there. Um, so where where and there was some discussion regarding the uh the heritage district in terms of. The zoning and and. Conversation regarding what areas would be commercial for versus mixed, uh but it was a good meeting and uh. Uh, but it it's ongoing. So it'll.
Okay. All right. Um, next up, Park Stricken Greenway Chair Report, Mr. Barisic.
Not here.
He's not here, so um mostly what we've been going over has been the Marvin Day Planning. Um. You are supposed to get together with Derek and. Bob, none of can to go over planting. So have you done that yet?
Uh, no.
Okay, can you put that, can you put that on your list?
Other things.
That's all. You're a little tall.
Yeah.
Can you put that on your list that we can get that approved and we can get plants for the wintertime? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Um, all right, nothing else.
And just uh just a note um for Jamie, if I don't think you were there, um but I think I told. John Jones and Bob. At the. Uh, National Night Out. There is a car show, because I know we're talking about doing a car show. There is a car show. That is Marvin is being held at Marvin Ridge High School, very similar to what we'll be doing or potentially doing. And the gentleman there who runs it is was has been wanting to hand the torch over to me because it's part of the band. And stuff and I'm involved with that at the high school, but um if if anybody, just so you know, there is going to be a car show from ten to two. Uh, on November sixth, that's before our next regular meeting, so I just thought I'd. Let also know the community know and for you, Jamie, um that is involved in kind of organizing that, but I think. John and I and and Bob are going to be working to put the car thing together for that day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, next up, consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Some move.
Further discussion. All's in favor? All right, motion passes. All right, motion passes. Next up is Billie Tall, Christina.
All right, so very minor, um, obviously you've seen the progression that we have, we're actually doing really good. With our scheduling, we had a couple of pickups that we've been able to address in-house without bringing them forward, which is why we removed the days, uh, number, item number one off. So we've been able to address that. Second item is when we did the generator move and, um, discovered the new location to run the, the, the lines. It's basically the cost fifteen thousand dollars for that change order that's going to come from the contingency. Just wanted to let y'all know that is something that's in my authority to approve. I just wanted to give y'all a heads up, but that's what we're proceeding with. And that, that's all I have at this moment.
Okay, any estimation of completion?
I don't say is eight months from the nose. We're, we're expecting January.
They're moving along pretty well. It's, it's looking good. Things are looking. We definitely see progress for the, the porches now, like that concrete has been, been put on, siding up on the second floor. They're, they're running power and plumbing and HVAC, all the rough ends right now. So that's a, a lot of work going on, a lot of craziness going on in there, but, uh.
We heard the framing for the curb gutter was out today, so that should be for this week.
Yeah, so they're doing curb gutter in the parking lot, the proof roll was approved, so they'll be doing final grading and gravel after they hit the curbing end. So they're moving along quickly.
Good. And did you guys meet on the underbrush?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll have some, some report findings at the next meeting. We actually sent out some quotes today, so we'll have more information for the next meeting.
Very good.
Can I just ask a quick question? I, I driving by there, I can obviously see the siding is going on and, um, you know, kind of the top of the, the town hall, which really looks nice. But it was in a, um, yellow and I guess I was, as I was passing by, is that just the color or is that, is that the actual color of it? Is that going to be painted? I, I just thought.
That's the actual, that's what we approved.
They just haven't added the polka dots yet, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
It hasn't been painted yet, Bob.
Thank you. I just, I just saw it and thank you very much.
Any other questions? Any, any other questions for Christina and Billie Tall? Nope, okay, very good. Uh, next up, F, Unfinished Business Number One, Discussion of Marvin Day, uh, Celebration, May 21st, 2022. Derek. Derek.
Did we not?
He was calling in.
Kim?
Yep.
Did we miss consider the change order? Did I miss that?
Christina has the authority to do it, she just was informing us.
Oh, okay, okay. I, I, I must have misheard that because I thought that was a subject for topic, but, okay, thank you.
Okay.
I just texted him, he, he responded to me, so now that he's up, so give him just a second.
Oh, hey, I didn't know if you were on the, I got you on speaker, I didn't know if you were on or.
You're up, you're up for Marvin Day.
Had two, you know, as we know, as you all know, we had two, uh, very productive meetings, uh, recently. Mostly to iron out the sponsorship structure and the schedule. Um, but I don't have anything new that was, you know, that had, since I presented it at the work session. So, um, I think everybody kind of has their marching orders, um, what direction they're going. You know, we've got the date and the facility locked in, um, few details, you know, as far as cost and hours and whatnot. But I don't have anything new from the work session.
Okay, Derek, I had sent an email to Christina about like a cover letter for our sponsorship form. Um, because I feel like I need some sort of letter, like explaining what Marvin Day is, so that I can attach the then sponsorship letter to that.
Yeah, I saw that email from her. I haven't been able to address it. If I can get about forty-eight more hours. Um, it's on my to-do list for this week, but I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so by Thursday at seven seventeen, you'll be good?
Uh, can I get like seven thirty?
Sure, seven thirty, got it. Okay, no, that's fine. I just, I, I was thinking about it because I was like, well, I can't just send this out to people that I know that own businesses without like, you know.
Explaining to them.
Yeah, and I feel like it needs to be like a universal, universal explanation of it, so it's not, you know, coming from, you know, different people.
Do you guys want to, um, just kind of blurt out a few sentences that you want to be included in that? Um, or, or just send it to me in an email, you know, like celebration of.
Hey, Derek.
In here.
The one that, um, the tree lighting introduction letter that I'd sent you as an example, you can just, you can just kind of use some of that template to, yeah, that same sentiment. They're just, they're really just trying to highlight what the seven events of the day are and that it's going to be an annual recurring event. So just, just that, me and you can do it. Just start with the tree lighting letter.
Okay, thank you, Derek. Um, I, I actually met with Firethorn on, or Mr. Mayor and I met with Firethorn on Friday morning, um, to just kind of nail down their involvement. Because they do want to be involved. And then they told us that that was their member guest weekend, which kind of I felt like threw a monkey wrench and everything. But we kind of pivoted and are talking about having, um, the club provide a shuttle for their, for their member guest players' wives and guests' wives that can then take them around Marvin and participate in Marvin Day. They will, we will still have events, we will still have stuff at the club, it will just be over at the pool, at the tennis courts, they'll still have food, all that stuff. So the only thing is, the only big wrench would be Saturday night. But then I was also informed that they were looking to move their dinner to Friday night instead of Saturday. So hopefully that is the case and because that's a large chunk of people that would not be able to participate on Saturday night. So.
But I, I like the pivot was, what was nice is they went from something at the club where the course is, you know, right there to up at the pool and having some sort of maybe hors d'oeuvres and stuff like that. But the thought of them creating a shuttle to provide something for them was really nice. Because we would let them know of events, everything from the run or walk-run thing we were contemplating to maybe the car show if they were interested with that, or just, you know, sites of Effer Park, those sort of things. So I, I think they were very, very open to, to us and, um, about what we're trying to accomplish here. So hopefully we can get them as a sponsor.
There's no way of, there's no way of really.
What?
Member guest.
I mean, you can call Josh and talk to him about it.
Well, I mean, I don't mind having a conversation, so that's something that they've, I don't have that date.
No.
I mean, that's not something they've made public, so.
Not yet.
So could they not do it the weekend before?
I think there's a wedding.
I think when it, I asked that same question, Jamie, and, um, I think they said, and this may be a permanent thing because of the conditions of the course when they used to have it and, and the challenges that came with that. And I think if I'm not mistaken, they rearranged some dates because of COVID of last year, and that seemed to work better. So they had scheduled this because of course conditions was a big part of it, I think to Kim's point, weddings. And I, I thought I did ask, correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, about any chance of changing that date since, uh, it was not, no, I think it was a hell no, but I mean, you can certainly try.
Well, I don't mind asking because, I mean, I understand the course conditions, but we're talking about one week. The course conditions aren't going to change in one week. And listen, and that's not a public, publicly, they haven't gone to the members and said, mark your calendars, save the day. So, I mean, you're going to have.
But I did go to him in the spring with this date. Who was like.
I, I know, and I mean, that's an argument that we could have, but I'm just saying, you've got, you're going to have two hundred Marvin rev, residents that are not going to be part of Marvin Day because of this.
I know. I know.
Well, I don't mind asking, I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay, if you want me to go, I'll go with you. I'd like to be there for that conversation.
I'd like to just listen in.
Yeah, okay, so besides that, does anybody have any other updates for Marvin Day? Nope, 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 all right.
Yeah, the dunk tank has been moved to have you sitting in the tank there, so.
No, no jokes, no, we're not allowed to joke anymore. I'm in for that. Okay, up next is, uh, G, New Business Number One, discuss, uh, discussion and consideration of waiving the three-bid requirement per village procurement policy to negotiate audiovisual awards to SKC Communication and amount pre-tax not to exceed eighty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. And authorize manager to execute agreement contingent upon attorney review and authorized budget appropriation for the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Christina.
So, um, rewind a couple of months ago, we did send out some bids for the audiovisual needs of, of Billie Tall. Those quotes came back around sixty thousand dollars, there was a lot of variables with it, um, depending on, on what our needs were. So from that, we took a lot of the, the same information that they provided in those quotes and put out another, or a few for the audiovisual needs in the new Billie Tall. We actually sent out to four different vendors. We only got one back, which is a full year packet. It came in at ninety-six thousand dollars. Per your threshold, we are, you know, required to get free quotes. However, we did make attempt to do that. We also advertised in the newspaper, the affidavit that's in your agenda packets as well. Um, so we're requesting to proceed with this proposal and allow me to negotiate under the threshold of eighty-nine nine. That one, you're okay with this?
I am. Our, our policy is actually stricter than the state laws on this, which is trying to get below the ninety thousand threshold. But I think we still had a, do we still have a newspaper ready anywhere?
We did do a newspaper.
Yeah, so this is mainly, our policy says free goods, um, with services, there's only a three-bid requirement with the construction. So I am fine with it.
So, so Christina, I mean, I know the second set of eyes would probably be Chaplin, but, you know, um, and it's a large amount for what we're doing, and I know it's, we're shooting to use the rescue funds is my understanding. But, uh, you're comfortable of not necessarily needing a second set of eyes? Not that I would be an expert in audiovisual or any of that kind of stuff by any means, but, you know, I mean, that's, it's, it's a large chunk of the budget, but it is part of what, you know, the ARP funds I think we're using.
I'm concerned more about what we're actually putting in or just the negotiation of the bid?
Well, I mean, when I first, we were first talking about this, this was before any of you guys were here, and I, I took the, the, I made the effort to go to Wesley Chapel just to see, and I took our clerk at the time, Melody. And, and we were just looking at what worked, what didn't work and why they did this and why they did, it was just a lot of questions. And I know we, you know, we have architects that do the building and stuff like that. But for the audiovisual, I mean, we've already have experienced and today so far, knock on wood, not too bad of audiovisual with this Zoom call meeting. But that's what we want, we certainly want to get better at the town hall meetings that we've had when we were, we were remote. But, you know, I mean, you, sometimes you don't know what you don't, you, you don't know the questions to ask, I guess. And, and I just, I just think that as, I mean, like a perfect example would be, um, Andy, you and I went to Stalings, I guess I should. Stalings and beautiful, um, brand new building that they're in. And, um, you know, it, it, it may be nice to just check in with them and say, okay, what, you know, it, it doesn't hurt to ask our counterparts that are close by saying, okay, what did you find work? Or what do you find is working really good? Maybe there's something out there. And that, that, it's just a recommendation, ideas are free. And I'm, I'm just concerned that, you know, a lot of times, I mean, that's, that's one question I ask all the time is, you know, what questions should I be asking that I don't?
So short, so, so the short answer is you're concerned about what we're putting in there more than the negotiation part of.
Probably, that's just, just looking at it from the outside looking in, you know, and, and that has no, nothing against you, Christine. I mean, it's just, you know, it's, it's, it's one person dealing with it and it's just something that, oh, wow, that was great that they did that, you know? And we usually collaborate on stuff like this, but, you know.
Yeah, that's a great question, and, and I'll fully admit that I'm not a technology audiovisual expert. So this is not something that we hired a consultant to actually map out for us. So yes, it is a very amateur, uh, way of dealing with trying to get the audiovisual done. I can tell you what I asked for and you can tell me if, you know, y'all will agree with that or you want more. But basically we're doing a projector that comes down the middle of the, um, council chambers. It will project on the, the two walls, one wall that council will face, that, that the council can see whatever is being projected. And then the opposite where the audience can see whatever's being projected. Um, for example, if we were sharing something right now, that would be what's projected on those two screens. Uh, in addition to that, there will be, uh, tablets of some sort that will be at each other, every other seat at the council chambers desk. So that you could also see it on your desks as well. Um, that's the gist of the council chamber rooms, we'll have some speakers in there as well. All of this will be set to a AV room that's, that's often decided at the council chambers room. The ability to navigate through a lot of the systems, we also have cameras that will record in the council chambers. Austin, wherever it is that's designated to control that, will have a tablet at their desk that's able to do it remotely. So they don't actually have to sit in the audiovisual room, uh, and it should all be controlled while you're at your desk. Um, interface throughout and it's saved on the server. Aside from that, we will have two monitors, uh, in the lobby, one in the front room, one in the back lobby. That would basically advertise events or anything that's, that's coming up so that people that come in either door can see any of the things that we want to display on those two screens. And then we will have in the closed session slash staff conference room. We'll basically have the same setup that we have right now, where we have a large TV mounted on the wall, the ability to have conference calls. It'll be a little bit more better quality than what we have now, but it's basically the gist of it.
And speakers.
Thousand dollars?
Yep.
Geez, there's a, there's a lot to it.
Yeah, but.
There's a lot of wiring and there's a whole lot of, there's a whole lot of infrastructure that's involved with this technology taking it all to work.
And that's all in your package.
That's a.
And, and that's, that's something like, I, I mean, one of my biggest pet peeves is like, for instance, this, how long this is going to last? I'm not sure with the Zoom, but at times it's very, very difficult to hear people. So when we have people there in person speaking up, having a good sound system, speakers that are, you know, just, you know, I, I guess I have a thing for speakers, especially with spending so much time in the band lately, when I hear all these other high schools that have these wonderful speaker systems and Marvin with as, as well as they do have, have a lousy system. So I just don't want to miss, make a miss. And, you know, to your point about a, a consultant and stuff like that, I, you know, I certainly have, I know people that have done it for me and stuff. And I'm always just full of questions and stuff, and it's just, you know, what's, what's going to be easy for guys like, I guess we're volunteering you, Austin, right? And, uh, Hunter, maybe you as well, to, uh, run the show while we're.
Nine, tablet, let, let me ask this question. Nine microphones. Um, if there's a concern or if the, the council wants to review this further and have maybe an expert look at it. I do have some other quotes that I did receive earlier on that were substantially cheaper than this. Could we take some of those into consideration at this point? Or would it have to be?
Was it, it was not.
It's not in response to this.
No, because it needs to be in response to.
That RFP.
Yeah, we could, we could.
Can you follow and ask them? I, I mean, I sent this to them and they alluded to them submitting a response, but they didn't, the day came down.
So we have to give that out for bid.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's your other option is to rebid it. But you'd probably want to know if they're going to submit a bid, they may.
But you'd probably want to know if they're going to submit a bid, they may have gotten busy, is, that's one of the problems, is people get busy or they don't have the staff.
I mean, I don't think we have time, it's October, if we're going to be in, I mean, they're going to start wiring now.
You've got all the wiring and plumbing and electric and stuff going on, you, this is, this is about the top of that.
Well, so, well, but here's one thing, okay, if we need to look at is, is that most of this equipment shares a common, um, type of communication wire. This I know from the work I was just doing last year, so the infrastructure can, can go in. For other companies to use that same infrastructure to, to operate the equipment, so is basically what we need to figure out, though, is bottom line is what we're after. And if, if what you bid is all we need, or if there's anything else that we should add to this system. And that's, I think that's where Joe's coming, is like, so. I think a couple of quick phone calls to Stalings, to Wesley Chapel, um, to Weddington, well, not Weddington, but Wesley Chapel, and then possibly even Waxahaw, because Waxahaw is getting ready to develop. An entire campus dedicated to their government services, and they may even know. Where they may be trying to go with technology for, because they've already got some facilities built, so they may have already dealt with some people.
So if Christina can call around and kind of get a better feel for it, then she can possibly, can, can, can we add or take away to their proposal?
Yes, we can negotiate with them.
So if you, if, I would say, let's, let's, we can approve this, because we want to get it under the ninety thousand dollar threshold, we can approve that and direct Christina to talk to a couple other municipalities. Make sure we're getting exactly what we need to get, and just let her move forward with it.
So prove it under ninety thousand, and, and also raise the village manager to, um, make modifications.
Yes, as needed, okay, are you, Joe, Bob, does that sound good?
Yeah, thank you for hearing me out on that.
No, that's good, all right, so I need a motion. To waive the three bid requirement for village procurement policy to negotiate audio visual award to SKC Communication in amount pre-tax not to exceed eighty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. And authorize manager to execute agreement contingent upon attorney review and authorize budget appropriation for the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. And allow the manager to make modifications as needed after speaking with local municipalities.
That, that's wonderful, and I think somebody can say it as, as stated, because it already has the contingent upon, and, and if we can't.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
She's trying.
Here's another thing, and, and I know this is becoming a, a large issue, matter of fact, I heard it coming over here. If you want to buy a new Christmas tree for this year, you need to buy it now, if you want to buy anything for Christmas, you need to buy it now. There's such a supply chain issue going on, and when these people do, they can't buy, you know, twenty systems to go out for bids, so you've got a lot of companies that won't bid on stuff because they don't know if they can get it.
Yeah, well, and especially electronics, because a lot of that's coming through the port in California, which is bottlenecked, as we all know, there's sixty-something ships floating around, waiting to get into port, so. A lot of this stuff is coming through that channel.
All right, Christina.
I'm good.
Have. Uh, next up, number two, discussion and consideration, sorry, discuss and consider adoption of twenty-twenty-two village council meeting schedule, Austin.
Okay, so this pretty much just follows the pattern for every year, um, I went ahead and picked out dates for the joint meetings with the planning board and PRG board. Here, the PRG board has already adopted their schedule, and they were fine with that joint meeting date, uh, that's their work session for that month, so they were already going to be on that date anyway.
So there is no February twenty-ninth this year, and I don't think that we want to carry it over from the eighteenth to the twenty-ninth. Okay, well, I mean, it should be the nineteenth.
My bad there.
That's great, and then can we change the Thursday, May twenty-sixth work session budgeted option to six PM as we did this year, so that people can come?
Good, catch on that.
And then I would request. Personal, if we can, instead of meeting on June fourteenth, we could meet on June seventh? A week earlier. Okay, all right.
As long as you get re-elected, otherwise.
No jokes, we can't joke, we have to, there's no jokes here, all right.
So what are we, what are we changing?
February twenty-ninth should read February nineteenth. Thursday, May twenty-sixth, instead of nine AM, it should read six PM, because that's our budgeted option, and we want to do that in the evening to allow as many residents to come and speak. If they want to speak about the budget, and then we're going to change Tuesday, June fourteenth to the seventh of June. And I got no other, I got, I got nothing else.
And Austin, will you send us those, uh, push notifications, so I can just. Those what?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
He wants you to send it in.
He knows my logo.
I got it, calendar invites, please.
So if you guys are, this, just, you know, mentioned after amended.
Yep, so can I get a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two village council meeting schedule as amended?
So moved.
Further discussion, all's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, um, next up, discussion of CRTPO Marvin Loop Grant, Hunter.
Okay, I briefly mentioned this to you, you guys during the work session two weeks ago, um. As you all know, we got these, uh, the grant to complete the Marvin Loop, uh, due to its, uh, its content, it's funding from DOT, due to coronavirus and all this other stuff. A lot of this got pushed back to where originally we were being programmed for, uh, to receive that funding in fiscal year twenty-five, um, in the initial start of this. However, some funds are available, and so, um, you know, for us to particularly get the project started sooner. Need direction from council, if that's something that, uh, you would want staff to do, um, this, this funding would be tied to the initial preliminary, um, engineering. Which the total cost of that is, um, kind of included in your packet, or the, the memo within your packet is, um. The, the total cost for the village would be ninety-eight thousand, and then the next step would be phase two would be the rideaway procurement, which would be, uh, sixty-three thousand. Once again, this is a reimbursement grant, so the village would actually pay for everything, pay, pay for the cost of these, um. Faces and then get reimbursed sixty percent of that cost.
We know how long it takes them to reimburse us?
Um, from my conversation with, uh, CRTPO is that it will be. Pretty much monthly, we can file, once that work's completed, and we get the receipt that we have paid, we would file it, there's training and stuff upcoming on that, and so I'll have to, I'll gather that information.
It's just for the, that, that's just for the right of way, so we would basically have to front the hundred and sixty.
Okay, but then we get reimbursed.
Correct, so.
Not, not, not a hundred and sixty, a hundred and forty, or whatever it is.
Sixty percent of a hundred and sixty.
Correct, yeah, so the total cost, the total cost for the project is one point seven million, that's, um, and then, so sixty percent of that, so we will, in theory. Cash flow wise, we will spend that one se- one point seven to be reimbursed sixty percent throughout the time of, when that construction is, um, or whenever the, whatever part of that project is completed.
I think you mean you front the one sixty, and you get sixty percent back as the reimbursement.
That's right.
Yes, that's what I said.
So, okay, I mean, yeah, I, I mean, I think, I think we were all in agreement to move forward.
Yeah, we just want to make sure y'all understand that we have to do a budget amendment on, and get the money for either fund balance or a capital project that we have in reserve. That's fine, we, we'll have to come up with that forty percent somewhere.
Correct, and, and also, just to also clarify, the one thing that I, the one thing that I have to, I'll get information on is that in the. Program schedule from D, um, from CRTPO with the grant that was provided by DOT. It says fiscal year, from my understanding, that's actually the federal fiscal year, which just started, so technically, federal fiscal year twenty-two just started. So if we move forward, we can start the phase one of that preliminary engineering environmental as soon as we get the budget, budget work, um, and the, right? It's from my understanding now, it, it could be then, it could be July of next year, but it, it all kind of is contingent upon getting that clarification, that's why I kind of highlighted that in the memo, because. The, um, the emails received from CRTPO references the federal fiscal year, so that's what my assumption is.
I'm all about getting things going on, friends.
Me too. Andy, you're good? Jamie, Bob, you good with that? Mr. Mayor, good, okay, everybody's good with that, so move, moving right along, anything else for that?
No, so it's this next step, so I will reach out to CRTPO and let them know that we are interested in that. From my understanding is that it shouldn't be an issue, and she'll just confirm with us, and if that's the case, then we'll start moving forward, doing the proper budget amendment and, um, necessary process for the preliminary engineering environmental.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. Next up is H, open topics, I think they have an open topic they wanted to talk about, about not being funny. The ghost. Joe, you got something?
Yes, I do, thank you, um, I think, and, and I was going to talk about this in council comments, but this may be a good time to do it. Um, because I think Christina may have responded to this email that I sent, uh, um, last Friday, uh, there was a, uh, one of our original. Not founders, but basically PR and G person Ray Williams passed away, and he was very influential, I'd be happy to read the email that was. Sent from Melody, our clerk from years ago, and, uh, it was, um, very touching, um, of course, I've, there it is. Give me a sec here.
Of Ray Williams.
Ray, and she, she talks about Ray Williams, um, again, he, he passed, I think he had cancer, I believe. And he was, uh, worked tirelessly for the village when he served as planning board chair, he was actively involved in rewriting the ordinances during the year-long moratorium. He spent countless hours at the village hall for meetings upon meetings, as a founding member of the PRG board, he served as chair, he worked at obtaining easements and building trails, organizing the hosting and mayor's. Event and building community interest and preservation of land, he also served on the village as the village code enforcement officer. Very good man, I've met him a few times, it's, it's been years, obviously, since I've seen him, but, uh, I got that notice from Melody, and, and. I think Christina, you, you sent me something to that maybe we have, um, Austin work on, or you can elaborate for the council.
Yeah, you, you, what you've done in the past is a proclamation, so if you have a contact, uh, for a family member where Austin can get some information from the individual, he can, he can put that together.
And, and Joe, uh, please forward me what you got from Melody, too.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to bring that up as something we can, you know, move forward, because he, he was very influential and good guy, and, uh, I think a lot of the reasons why Marvin is Marvin is because of him. From the very get-go, so just for FYI information, so, um. That thing else, I'll leave that for council comments, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ray, it's very sad, and I'm, our thoughts and prayers about his family, so.
I'll, I'll forward that to you, Austin, so.
Thank you.
Or actually, uh, Christina, you, you got that, right, I sent that to you?
You did, I can forward it to him.
All right.
That's probably a good idea.
I'm challenged when it comes to computers, I'm sure I'll lose that email by the time I go to the book court. Sorry.
All right, no jokes, um, next up is I, agenda, agenda items, number one, review of action items, Austin.
Hey, Hunter will work with Union County on co-location of the cell tower, will look into a tech consultant, will work back at the October twenty-eighth meeting. Hunter will push, uh, the link to residents for county meetings, Christina will talk to other municipalities about AV equipment, I will work on a proclamation for Ray Williams.
Budget amendment, CRTPO.
That's all I got.
All right, uh, Christina. Next up is ru- review of ongoing action item list.
Pursue.
I'm dead, I don't have any. Anyone have any?
I know.
Actually, I've got two.
I know, I saw that, yep, all right, uh, next up is council comments. Amy. Council comment. Okay, Jamie, council comment.
Um, this, quick note on, I think village hall's coming along good, and, uh, I know you guys are doing a lot of work to. Keep that pushing forward and all the stuff you do to put all this together. Great work, thank you.
Bob? I have three things, uh, first off, I want to thank all the residents that have personally emailed me regarding the cell tower. And I do want to reply to everybody individually that sent, uh, an email, email to me, but I hope, um, for those that are listening or still in on listening. That, um, what we accomplished tonight, you know, hearing everybody's voice, um, is something that we're all taking very seriously about this. Uh, the other thing that I want to, um, mention is, I want to thank personally, you know, Jamie Bays, Derek Durst. Uh, for the great job they did with the National Night Out, uh, it's a lot of work putting something like that together, and it was well attended. Uh, I know a lot of people, you know, spent all day long preparing for that, and, um, I thought it was nice, it was the first one I've ever been to. Um, and I thought it was a success, uh, my personal feeling, and the third thing I wanted to talk about was, and I was going to say this in open topics, but maybe this is kind of like. Sort of a shout out to, to everybody, you know, we've accomplished a lot, uh, especially over the, you know, since I've been in office, we've accomplished a lot over the last couple of years. And in the spirit of the fact of Thursday's town hall, I thought maybe it might be for those that would not be able to attend for whatever reason. That somehow maybe Austin, that we can send an email out that kind of lets people know that if they missed the meeting, uh, or in, in conjunction with the meeting coming up. All, all the accomplishments that we've done, I mean, we've got a lot of stuff rolling right now, there's a lot of things going on from town hall to, uh, you know, obviously, what we're working on with the heritage district. Uh, dealing with, uh, all the different issues that we've been dealing with as far as the programs coming in with money, um, to, you know, help with the trails, I mean, there's, there's a stuff we've been doing. So I thought maybe something like that could go out in advance, I know it's, you know, it's like between now and Thursday, but even a recap of everything that we've done. You know, to, to, to help everybody who didn't, would not be able to attend the town hall.
I, I, Bob, I think that's a good idea, I think, I think a recap afterwards, because it's not going to get done beforehand.
Sure.
I know we're going to go over our list of accomplishments, so it's basically just going to be, you know.
Yeah.
And just put, you know, everything.
Hope everybody can come out, I mean, there's going to be a food truck there.
Yes, with some Dan Goodview, no jokes, sorry, no jokes, sorry. Okay, Bob, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor.
You know, I have nothing to say, actually, I have a lot to say.
All right, so I'm, so we're going to.
First off, my apologies for not being there in person, um, I had to take this opportunity, spending a little time with my brother down here at the coast, but, uh, thank you, staff, obviously, um. And, uh, and just because I'm not there, just so, I guess we've lost pretty much everyone based on what I'm looking at, and there's.
Yeah, everybody's gone.
Numbers and the fact that, I was going to do a little shout out to Brandon, he was the last one hanging on in the Zoom call, but, uh, anyways. Thank you for the residents who came out, took the time out of their day to get on Zoom, you know, we always say, we never hear from you until we have a backhoe in your backyard, and that's usually when we start getting it, but. Um, those, I just want to assure them that those comments are, uh, being listened to and very carefully, and, and, uh, um, we look forward to seeing how we can help with that process and, 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 and doing what, uh. The community wants, because that's what we're here for, um, let's see, um. We are, we're still going to have one more meeting, but, uh, I still, I'm going to encourage people to get out the vote, because this is an off year, we have very little people participate, um. So just another opportunity to encourage people to mark that on their calendars, and if they're going to be out of town, do an absentee ballot, get out and vote, the only thing on the ballot is for council members. You're choosing three council members and one mayor, so. You're choosing three council members and one mayor. So, um, please do that. Um, I thank the residents. Um, again, as it relates to residents, town hall is one of the few opportunities that you have dialogue other than council, coffee with council. So please come to our meeting at town hall at Efor Park, six o'clock Thursday night. And I, I've been putting the word out through my wife and her tennis group and stuff. So, and I think we are having a food truck there, correct, Austin?
What? Dan Good Q.
Okay, good. So, uh, please come out to that. Um, and I want to take a minute to say national night out. Um, it was, um, well attended. Thank you, staff, for that, especially John Bear sits behind the grill, uh, sweating and grilling burgers, but specifically a shout out. So you guys know this, and I don't think many of you do. But Publix, who was part of our first commercial at Marvin Gardens, Publix donated over eight hundred dollars of food items to us. We had so many burgers and hot dogs and breads and, and cookies and things that I think all went to a food, uh, bank, uh, that was left over. So, uh, I think, uh, some of the officers took charge of that and that food left. But thank you for the council that were able. I know Jamie, you weren't able to be there, but I think we were all there. And I, I, I just want to specifically note that and make sure we get on record that Publix is, is, is a good partner for the community and was really a big help. And, uh, that may be someone we look to for Marvin Town Hall as a sponsor as well. Um, and then finally, I'm telling you guys, the band is killing it in Marvin Ridge. I'm down on the field pushing stuff and they're getting better and better. There's a football game this Friday night. Come out and see us. The game starts at seven o'clock. I will be on the field pushing equipment around. They are so good. You would be so proud of us to get out there and, uh,
We can't, we can't get in there.
Yeah, we'd come, but we can't get in.
I got, I got, I'll get you in the back door.
Just really fast, um, I had to.
Volunteer for the band and help push equipment out. I'll get you in.
Really fast. I did. I have been trying to talk to the county about the, the county schools and I have not been able to get anyone on the phone or anyone to respond to an email. I'll keep trying.
You may, you may need to go down there and knock on the door.
I'll make a note, guys. I'll make a note to call someone over at the county to see what we can. No, I'm just going to find, give me a name, give me a name and a phone number that, uh, we can make that happen. So.
Yeah.
Because I think quite, frankly, that many elected officials know about that nice little perk that, you know, gets you into these.
That's why they won't call you back because they don't want anybody to know.
Yeah. Um, speaking of all town holiday, what time do we need? You guys need us to be there? Starts at six thirty, correct?
That's going to be there at five, five, five thirty. You guys can be there soon.
Starts at six thirty.
Starts at six thirty.
Yeah, it'll be there thirty minutes before.
Thanks. Okay. Cause we don't have any technology to fiddle around with. Okay. So six o'clock, everybody be there, be square. That was my public comment. So now I need a motion to move into closed session pursuant to N C G S one four three dash three one eight dot one one A three to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to protect the attorney client privilege.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll call you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.